To order, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Ortonville Village Council. It is now December 11th, it is now 7:01 PM, 2017. All rise for the pledge and the invocation. Tanya, if you would, please.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fly your heads, please. Lord God, we're so thankful for your blessings given our community this past year. We're truly grateful for your guiding hand in our daily journeys. Now, as we begin this Christmas season, help the council to always keep your example in mind, and that is that we continue to help our community to become the best that it can be, and that we continue to help those that are less fortunate. May we always have an open ear and open heart to their needs, not only at this Christmas time, but throughout the year as well. We humbly ask these things in your name and to your glory. Amen. Real call vote, please, Liz.
Vote.
Here.
Batsu?
Here.
Eschman?
Robinson?
Here.
Skornikov?
Here.
Sliva?
Here.
Wells?
Here. I'd like to take this time to take a moment and welcome our newest member of our council. Name is Mark Robinson, and Mark and his wife, I'm sorry, her first name is?
Jill.
Jill?
Jill.
They reside on Mill Street. Mark is a 28-year resident of the village of Ortonville. He is a engineer in the aerospace industry, and he's shown quite a bit of interest attending several of our last, most recent meetings. And so when this vacancy came up, he and I talked, and he decided to give it a good shot, and we appreciate that. This term that he is filling will be the balance of the term that originally started three years ago when Liz Waters was voted in as a trustee, and so Mark is filling the balance of the year in that particular...
Keith Dialis.
Well, it started when Liz, and he's filling the balance of that four-year term. Most recently vacated, of course, by Keith Dialis, but it originated as Liz Waters' four-year term. And so, with that said, welcome, Mark. We appreciate your involvement, look forward to your input.
All right, thank you.
You've taken the oath?
Yes, I have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, just making sure before we proceed.
We have an agenda before us tonight, and so we're looking for any additions or corrections to that agenda.
Do we want to break down under six, where it has the meeting dates and the holiday observance dates, break it down into two separate, because they are two separate things, having the meeting dates accepted and having the holiday observance accepted?
No.
Have it as one?
Yes, keep it as one. And actually, they're acceptance items, anyway. So we're not actually...
I guess I remember seeing something from Liz that said about getting it approved, because we've approved them in the past. We've actually had an approval, right? Isn't that...
And then after a discussion with Wayne, you guys had discussed it in a previous meeting, and he said if you approve it as an acceptance item this evening, it would be considered approved.
It's fine, okay. Okay.
Another way that you see that from time to time is either as acceptance or...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, yeah.
And then, under the discussion items, 11, Mill Church, East Ridge Drain, should that be under old business and not a discussion item, because it would be under the old business, and then liquidation of assets would be new business, and the CIP would be old business?
No, that's actually new business.
The CIP?
No, the Mill Street, the Mill Church and East Ridge Drain.
Okay, so should it be new business and not under discussion item? Wouldn't that be under new business and old business?
Well, we're only going to be discussing it. It's just a discussion item. We're going to be talking about it what the DPW plans are, and then the liquidation of the asset is just getting rid of the old truck.
Well, right, I understand. I'm just trying to define old business and new business, rather than having discussion items and then new business, old business, so... Okay, and then last month, we tabled the DDA appointments, and I don't see it on the agenda this time, so we're going to just table that, too.
They haven't come forward with their bios on those individuals.
And then, under 13, old business, just for clarification, to have township slash village parking replacement proposal, otherwise, it's like, what are we talking about? And then, under 13C, I would suggest that, one, that we strike that from the agenda, because I'm not sure why it would be a discussion on the agenda, and if we don't agree to strike it, then I think it should be under new business.
I think it should be new.
Okay, I would agree, too. That should be under new business. So we'll make that 12, strike it from 13C to 12A. And we'll add the word proposal after the word parking, township, village parking.
Replacement proposal?
Right. Replacement.
Resurface?
No.
Because they're removing it, that's why I put replacement, because I had resurfaced two, but since they're replacing it, so... Okay. So I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Was that you, Mark?
Yes.
That's right, I got to remember, I got two Marks now. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Councilman Skornikov, supported by Councilman Batsu. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Agenda is approved. We have council meeting minutes from November 27.
I have a suggestion on page two, middle, where it's under the public hearing, where it says Ms. Edwards offered the fire authorities. I just suggest that we replace Ms. Edwards with the clerk. And remove, strike or, and just put AEDs in parentheses, because that's what AED stands for, is the automated external defibrillators. It's not or, it's not both, it's just the one, so I would just suggest that.
Yeah, just strike the or and put AED in parentheses left and right.
Right.
And that would be appropriate for the clerk's position, rather than the individual.
Right.
Okay, I agree there.
And just add, ask for meetings, public meetings.
Where are you at?
The same pair, just add, and ask to public meetings are often held there. Add a "s."
Okay.
Page...
Be lowercase, public meetings.
Yeah. I talked to her about some other capitalization throughout that. I think she's going to take a look at that. Page three, I suggest, under myself, trustee Skornik indicated that material was available on the, indicated that the material on the improper expenditures was on the MML website, and for those that did not review, I was providing materials to the clerk to be distributed to the trustees.
Okay. You actually provided it the last meeting, didn't you?
I gave it, right, this is the last meeting that we're talking about. I had mentioned, I actually gave, I suggested, I made a comment at the previous meeting about the information is available on the website, so you're available to go out there and do it. But for those that didn't do it, I was providing the hard copies, for Liz to provide hard copies to trustees. And that's what she did in today's, but I didn't say about...
Okay, just wordsmith that, Liz, if you would.
I can get with you after the meeting.
You understand? Got it?
Yes. Page five, under D, I suggest, where it says the discussion was tabled, to add for estimate. You have it circled right here. It just gives us a reason why it was tabled, so we were waiting for the estimate?
Well, we had the estimate. What we were waiting for was the confirmation that the price would be held in the spring of the year. That's what we were waiting for.
So can we say for clarification? Okay.
For verification.
Clarification, yeah, can we say for clarification?
For price stability through the winter, essentially.
Right, for quote, to be extended.
Yeah, sure.
For quote to be extended.
For quote guarantee extension.
For quote guarantee. Anyway, I was just putting in, wanted as a reason.
A reason, yeah.
And then, under E, I suggest that we strike the second sentence and the third sentence. I don't think that needs to be applied in our minutes. And add that he met, him being President Wells, met with him and John Lyons. So striking sentence two and sentence three, and adding that he met with John Lyons and Mark Robinson. And in the motion, I just suggested that we clarify vacated by Keith Dialis term ending November 2000, insert the word term. And page six, I suggest that include that further review by President Wells, trustee Skornikov, and the village clerk to review the IT services agreement, because we discussed that we were going to review that further.
Which one are you talking about?
G.
What are you saying, then, the only requirement is to review and to sign? Is that what, where you would put that?
This is also a cost-free agreement, anyway.
Right. It is, but the point was, is that we discussed that we were going to review it, to further review it, and we haven't done that, and it was discussed that we were going to do it. I just want that in there. I suggest that it be included, that we...
Agreement for the use of the services after review. Is that what you're suggesting?
I think what Karen said, the only requirement is to review and sign the agreement.
I understand, but I think that we needed to review it, and we hadn't reviewed it. That was my point. It's not about if it's free or not, it's about making sure that it's reviewed. So I'm suggesting that we just add that, further review by Will Skornik and the clerk.
Are we ready to go to page seven? Okay. Down there, on page seven, down there under C, chickens, it says trustee noted that the animals-at-large ordinance refers only to dogs and needs to be updated as well. Actually, I was quoting John Lyons from the 10/23/17 village council meeting, so I would probably just strike that, rather than try to repair that. You know, because I'm quoting John Lyons from a different meeting.
So although it was part of the discussion, to delineate that there is a specific separation between the two.
Well, then...
I don't want to have it left out, because...
Trustee Sliva note...
Reiterated John's statement.
Noted that John Lyons stated that the animals-at-large ordinance refers only to dogs and needs to be updated as well at the 10/23/17 village council meeting. This is really all coming from John.
Okay.
And the whole purpose was to reiterate that point.
Yeah, I did get in, you know, reiterated it at the November meeting, but this is actually John's statement and John's idea.
And I think we're all in agreement that that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
And by leaving it on, it helps us to remember, to keep reiterating it.
So things don't get, yeah. And then, just the paragraph above that...
It's not something I came up with by myself.
That I stated that the planning commission posting was vacant, and perhaps that trustee Robinson may be interested as the council rep.
We're just getting him off of first base.
I think since, you know, we're still on page seven, I might as well jump in here. On B, where the trash receptacle screening was discussed, it was also discussed under David Trent, so that's been going on longer than just interim John Lyons. So I just think it should be noted, it doesn't have to be changed.
It does say manager David Trent on there.
No.
No, neither mine.
Item two, it says.
An ordinance. It really probably should be, because it's one, it's...
I was just going by number one.
Yeah, I, B, it's kind of all part of the same, so, yeah, why, yeah. We probably could just strike two, the number two there, since it all goes together.
Okay.
That's a lot different.
Well, one's a specific location, and the other one is the ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
They both deal with both inter, both managers.
I have nothing else. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 27, 2017, as amended.
Support. Motion by Councilman Skornikov, supported by Councilman Batsu, to approve the minutes of the November 27, 2017 meeting minutes as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes are accepted.
The acceptance items. We're doing the acceptance items first, though, right?
Well, we typically don't accept them. I mean, we don't, we don't vote on them.
Oh, I know, but just to...
So we have the treasurer's report and the 2018 meeting dates and holiday observance dates, they were discussed the last meeting. And we did elect to change that meeting one year from now, move it to the third week of December. So next year's meeting will be...
December 17.
December 17, yeah, of 2018.
Let me change that.
Let me change that, May meeting to Monday, the 21st.
Okay.
Okay. So we have dispersments in the amount of $20,741.86. Questions?
What was the total amount for number eight that we paid for the audit to Stevens? The balance was $1,000. How much did we pay?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
I would have to ask Beth. I could follow up tomorrow, though.
Okay.
It was not over and above that which we recorded. Was it $6,000 or $7,000, wasn't it, I believe? In that range?
Something like that.
Seems like.
And then, for number 14 and number 30, we're not doing the stipend any longer, right?
That is correct. The number 30 was the final payment of the last extension.
Mm-hmm. Bob, was that, was that the new salter?
No. That was the old salter.
Okay.
Interesting, 37, 31, and 23, all in a week.
Which ones?
23, 31, and 37, all in a week and after the last meeting. Knowing that it's not correct.
Well, we've had discussions with our CPA, with our auditor, and basically, if it's used for the necessary work of the employees of the village, those pieces of clothing and apparatus that could not be used for them personally, for them to take home personally...
Right, it's got to serve a public purpose.
It's got to serve a public purpose, and typically would stay here.
Right. Correct.
And Bob, that's the case with...
Well, Bob's bibs aren't going to stay here if he leaves.
No, 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 I'm talking about the end of the workday. Don't they, don't they stay here, so that you don't typically use them at home personally?
What, my bibs?
Any clothing, any articles?
I use my bibs every day, everywhere.
Yeah, it doesn't serve a public purpose.
I can cut to the chase for that, and stuff. In the past, like, for the first few years I worked there, I bought these t-shirts and sweatshirts for the guys. I bought them myself out of pocket, because everybody looked so raggedy all the time. We did not ask for this thing.
I know you didn't.
Nor did we, I mean, I just soon not get it anymore. We, I've talked to the guys about it, and we don't, we don't need it. If that's an issue at all, we don't, we don't need it anymore, we don't, we're not cold.
No, I know you guys didn't ask for it, and I think that from a clothing to be identified, I think it is a safety, so like, I noticed the guys today had the bright, I don't know if it was the orange or the yellow, and I think that that is a safety, and I think that that should be there, but I think, you know, getting it beyond anything else, that doesn't serve a public purpose. And I, you know, found that out in that class that I went through, and I talked to Wayne about it a few things, too, that we just need to tighten up a little bit, but I know that it was in the budget before, but to know better is to do better, so that was, that's my only point.
Well, outerwear, the safety vests are, there's no question at all about those.
I'm not questioning those.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on dispersments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. I move to pay our bills in the amount of $20,741.86. Motion by Will, supported by Councilman Bryce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Batsu?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikov?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
That account has not been depleted, anyway, so moving forward, we don't have to worry about it for this year.
Item eight on our agenda is public comments, our agenda items. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to item number nine on your agenda, items from trustees.
The fire authority board did not meet this last month, because we had the meeting last month, so I have nothing to report there.
Christmas in the village was very, very well-attended, and I served hot chocolate and hot dogs and whatever else they needed down at the old mill, and it was packed down there. And a lot of people were there visiting Santa Claus and had some free hot chocolate, and it was, it was quite a party down there. Enjoyed it very much. So enjoyed it very much.
Who lit the tree? Okay, I mean, I'd...
Half of it.
Oh, only half worked?
Well, until we found out there were two switches.
Oh.
I forgot about it. Bob told me there were two switches. I only hit one.
It was double the fun.
Okay.
Yeah, we had delayed reaction about five minutes.
Only half ever worked anyway, right? Luminaries, we've had a discussion since the last meeting. We will be assembling them on Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we will be distributing them the morning, the Christmas Eve morning, as we've always done in the past. Liz, I believe, has our volunteers lined up. I believe our DPW or Liz is getting the sand and getting that set up and the plywood and all that sort of thing, and the trailers.
And I do have confirmed with Candy, her trailer, and the lady from the Girl Scout, Cub Scouts, her trailer as well.
Okay.
Friday is the 22nd, correct?
Correct. It's the Friday before Christmas, yep. So we'll be doing that. And...
Do we have any particular groups that are already committed to help us on that, the assembly part?
I will have to follow back up with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts on the assembly part. I definitely have them for the distribution on Sunday at 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
Just let me, just send me an email.
I would like to thank the DPW and the CERT and the Recreation Department for everything for Christmas in the village. It was wonderful once again this year. Mrs. Miller and the high school choir extended thank you for their invite for being involved in Christmas in the village as well. They sounded wonderful. And the last thing that I have is a request for us to consider a plaque, a memorial for Deputy Overall, so we can be concurrent with the schools and the townships' plaques that they have given.
Okay. Would you like to make that in form of motion?
Sure, one.
Okay. Spending up to a certain dollar limit.
Is that new or no?
You can do it now. Spending up to a certain dollar limit.
What are our September 1st? Would that give you an idea how much it would be?
I just put a dollar limit on it.
That's what I'm saying. I have no idea what it would be.
All right, just do some investigation of what it would cost and then bring it to January's meeting. Then we know what it would be. I mean, I don't know what September 1st.
I feel like that's six weeks from now. And they've already done it and given and I don't know if we want to draw that out there.
I'd just say up to $50.
Where are you going to put it?
Just make a motion up to $50.
Where are we going to put it?
Is that what it was around there? Okay, that's what I was looking, I can't remember that was last month.
It was the trophies for...
September? $60. Okay, so 75 to give us a cushion.
Okay.
All right. With that, I would like to make a motion of a memorial plaque given in memory of Deputy Overall with a $75 limit.
Support.
A motion by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Robinson, to provide a memorial plaque in memory of Officer Overall to be presented to his family. Okay? Not to exceed $75.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Skornika?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. One of the things that we'll need to address, and if you'd like to pipe in while you're thinking about this, is that the actual, this would be the time of the year when we would consider either reassigning or trying a subcommittee of a different type from that which you have served in the past, this past year. We do have two vacancies at the moment, one for the Streets Committee and one for the Planning Commission. And if you would like to be considered for a different subcommittee than what you see in your list here. Do you have this list? You should have a list of subcommittees. Part of the village council roster.
Just a second.
Okay, I'll give you a second. Right now, Colleen Skornika's website and IT. And she's also part of the three-person Subcommittee for Personnel. Mark Batsu is on the Fire Authority. Karen Sliva is on the Historical Society. I am on the DDA. Councilman Bryce.
When does the Planning Commission meet?
Planning Commission meets, I believe it's the first Tuesday of the month.
Mm-hmm.
Or they, or they may or may not meet if there's...
I'm not organizing the queue.
If there's no, if there's no business, then they would not necessarily meet.
Okay, sorry. There it is. Oh, okay.
I believe it's the first Tuesday, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. First Tuesday of the month. So are you interested, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
Streets?
Is there anyone who would like to switch around or consider a different assignment?
I'll stay where I'm at unless somebody wants to take one of, you know, take either one of mine. If somebody's interested in one of mine, I'll switch.
I'm just getting a handle on the Fire Authority. I kind of like it.
Okay.
I'll stay there.
And I need to stay where I'm at because I have some things planned for 2018.
Good.
I'm good.
You're good? So I guess...
Would you like to try Streets?
I guess, well, I could do Streets too. You know, I could, I could do Streets, so.
I'm jumping in.
I'm just trying to pick someone up.
Well, for the time being, let's, I'll do the Streets and then you and I can perhaps work together. And we'll see how my added responsibilities in the short term to assist with the village administration is going to involve how much time and if it's...
What's involved with the Streets?
I'm sorry?
What's involved with Streets?
Well, just being pretty much, I would say, brought up to date as to what's going to be taking place in the near future. Working with our DPW supervisor, Bob Hoxwell, to review the punch list, so to speak, on the Streets. And he's pretty much on top of his game with respect to strategies on crack filling and restriping and things of that future.
I see that. I've seen him around town many times.
You can copy his answers.
Pardon me?
You can copy his answers.
So we'll do that on a sharing basis. How is that? Excellent. Okay. Very good. Okay, item 10, administrative updates.
I trust that that person that was impacted is all okay now?
On the first one?
Yes.
Yes, last I heard, yes. The second one, I followed up with you all via email. I just didn't know if I needed to make it a part of the record. So that's why I included that as well.
What was decided in the end to start without and then see how it goes?
Pardon me?
To start as is and then see how it goes before adding the shield?
Before adding the shield.
Yeah, when they...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because I thought if we're going to do that, we have to do all of them. I mean, you know, evaluate all of them.
Correct.
One or the other.
Okay, so you jumped ahead. You're not talking about the first item?
No, the second. Sorry, somebody said in order to sponsor the second. So that's what I piped in.
Okay. Bob, would you come up to the podium, please? Okay, would you explain what the strategy is on the old mill railing? If you would, please.
About where the end of the railing is, I think where the fella tumbled. We're going to copy the railing that's there and bring it on out. I think it's 14 feet. And we're going to end it right, there's an Edison pole there, and we're going to end it right there.
So you're going to take it out 14 feet further?
To the east, yes. And just copy what's there. I've found the brackets, I haven't been to Home Depot to get the lumber yet, but I found the brackets that'll mount it to the concrete. We'll mount it to the concrete with tapcons and...
When's the, the date that you think you'd be able to do it, in the spring?
Oh, no, we'll probably do it sometime this week.
Are you still going to plan on doing it this year?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do it this win, this winter. I just got to get all this stuff rounded up.
Now, the ones that are there now are removable. Would these be, but they've never removed them as of late.
Right. I mean, they're removable. The way I plan on doing the removable from spinning the tapcons out of the concrete. But I mean, they're not going to be able to just shimmy them out of a socket, you know, out of a pocket or something. They'll be, they'll be... I just want them to be, the ones that are there, they kind of wobble a little bit, you know, like when you grab a hold of them. The ones, we're going to anchor them right to the concrete. They won't wobble, but they'll, they'll be able to take them off without too much effort. If, you know, if that ever came up.
Okay. So you're seeing the existing railing that's there now, you're just going to resupport it maybe so it doesn't wobble?
Well, I wasn't going to do, I wasn't going to do anything to the existing.
Okay. Does it need to be lifted?
It is wobbly.
It is wobbly.
And in the winter it's...
You know, the pockets and the wood shrinks over the years, and then they get loose in the pockets. I mean, I, we could probably do something to shore those up. I don't think it's going to make them any stronger. They just won't be wobbly, you know?
As a reminder, the old mill is not open until April 1st again, as I recall. Is that right, Karen?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But people walk that every day.
People will walk that just up and down the sidewalk or...
That is the only sidewalk.
Yeah, there's not as much activity. But it is the only sidewalk on the south side, yeah.
You can't walk around it.
I do.
And it's very icy.
My wife walks up the steps. I always take the other side of it, you know? It's not room enough for two.
Okay. Any questions otherwise? Thanks, Bob. I have had the second item on the street light. I did talk via text with Mrs. Hubbard, and she's fine with this response, which I did share with her verbatim. I did happen to notice on the way down M-15, the one, the new street light, which is an LED light on M-15 at the end of Otten Road by Bedrock Express. And I happened to notice that the downward light beams were, were pretty much focused downward. And those new LED lights are like that. They're not as broad and are broadcast as the older ones are. But if in fact it becomes a problem with any of the neighbors, then we'll put some shields on it. Liz, this rate increase for legal notices, is that a published, is that from the Citizen or where's that from?
That is from the Citizen newspaper. I was informed last week. They called to let me know.
So that's particular only to the, or only by the Citizen now? Okay. And what have we, what have we found out with respect to Facebook thus far?
Greg Norman actually has the page created. He had some difficulty at first because you have to associate with a person. You can't just create a group. So it's actually the Brandon Ortonville Community Information, but you can't just find it. I've been searching for it all day, so...
All day?
Yeah, all day. I haven't done anything else. So I sent him an email and asked him to send me an invitation so I could join it. He's already putting information on there for the township. And he said he's ready for any kind of information we want to include. So I'll get with Colleen if she wants me to send him anything to include. I'm sure she probably would like to take a look at it before we send anything.
Right, I was going to bring that up in the, in the meeting minutes because, yeah, I guess to see it before we went live, so to speak. Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, as far, as far as process and also content, we've got luminaries. We need to get that word out too.
And on our web. And also, if you recall in our last meeting, I wanted to be specific that it's Greg Norman overseeing that, not the high school staff. That we made that clear.
Yes.
To make sure that we know what's going out there. And we want to be sure because obviously we know the effects of social media, how they can be very advantageous, but they can also be very detrimental. And people posting, you know, different things are, you want to make sure that everything's on the up and up and there's no one side or anything, so.
So would he be called the primary overseer or the only overseer? How would you describe that position? I'm not familiar with Facebook, so I don't know.
I would say he's the primary administrator.
Primary administrator?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have to, you know, be able to hold somebody accountable, you know, so...
Right, exactly, yeah. Absolutely.
So he's the primary administrator and that would, he's responsible for what goes up, what comes down. But I don't like that it's that hard to find, so I might have to tweet that.
It may not be live yet. And he might not even have it open yet.
He's already posting township stuff, you said.
But it doesn't mean that he has it open for anybody to join yet. He's creating it, but is it open?
I think so, but the problem is, in order for you to find it, you have to have, you know, people have to know it's there and like it and get on there. That's why I said, well, if you send me the link and I can like the page, then, you know, then my group can see it. Yeah, I can put it on our website.
Stay at the link to the village website.
Yep, we can have like a little like us on Facebook.
Right, right, we can make the announcement that, yeah, you can like, yep.
Yep.
Just let me know and I'll come in.
Okay. Well, he told me this evening that he sent me the link, so I should have it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And could you elaborate on that CIP, Row, professional services?
Yes. John, I'm assuming you are all aware that John signed engagement with Row for the CIP. And they are starting to get stuff together and are getting ready to send documentation. And he called me, he being Dino Parca, this afternoon, saying he had some documentation and stuff to send over and how should he go about it? And I said, well, everything should probably flow through the office to be forwarded to John. And he said he would try and get it in an Excel format. That way, it could just be populated and sent back to him rather than getting it to John, having John figure out how to print it, write out what needs to be written out, and scan it back. So I will, of course, if you like, let you know what that documentation is when I get it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Are you going to make it available to all council?
If you would like that, yes, I can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a thought, possibility to be in Google Sheets instead of Excel?
Is there a thought, possibility to be in Google Sheets instead of Excel where they can both work out at the same time and anything can be changed and edited at the same time versus sending a document back and forth? It's live and then you can just access and open and...
If John's available and knows, is familiar with that, I don't know.
I can certainly ask.
So we will be getting a copy of the bridge inspection report? Did he say, what's his definition of ASAP?
Well, I was hoping to get it before the meeting this evening, but the person who was in that department was not there at the time. So hopefully I'll have it tomorrow since I didn't get it this evening for you. I know it was Trustee Eshman who specifically asked for that.
And Sean is here tonight, Sean McFall?
That is correct.
And this is a proj, would you step to the podium, please? So your name is?
My name is Sean McFall.
Okay, and this project is for, is for a class, a specific class?
Yes, my government class at my school.
Okay. So the shadowing and the project has to be turned in by the fourteenth?
The fifteenth, but I have until the fourteenth to gain time.
So that's like this week?
There's a lack of oversight on my part.
Okay.
Have you, have you started with the township already?
I have and they have gotten me a job for Thursday. I could suffice without any help from the village, but it would be beneficial for me if I could get some.
And is this during the day or after school?
For this project, we are allowed one day where we can get off of school to do it, which would be Thursday for me. So it would be anytime after school tomorrow or Wednesday or on Thursday after I work, which would be the afternoon.
And you're just, are available to do anything that the clerk would requ, you know, would request of you? There's nothing specifically that you need to focus on?
Nope.
Just whatever?
Okay, Liz, do you have any, have you thought about any?
I could have my property files.
Yeah, we gotta get moving that out.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, oh, I can find work.
We've gotta go on the documents and demand and those, the project, I think the property files would be a good start.
Yeah.
So this is what day, I guess?
Yeah.
So...
That sounds, that's, what day, you said Thursday?
Yes, Thursday, sometime in the afternoon.
Are you gonna be in on Thursday bill at all? No? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Good. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a nice project. Any other questions, comments? For either Liz or myself along these veins? So your earlier comments, moving forward then, Colleen, is that some of these administrative updates could be better put in in old and new business? Or would you not, would you rather not see them lumped together in administrative updates?
Well, I think it needs to, wherever it falls, if it's new business, because that's how we can show the transparency. We can show what's been going on and discussed. So wherever it fits in new business or old business.
We'll work on that next, for the next meeting then. Okay, good. Okay, item 11A. Bob? Could you step up to the podium again, please? One of the things that I think the, our village residents need to be made aware of is the success that the DPW has had with one particular project. And it's a project Mill Hill, as I'll call it, up Mill, Mill Street. If you remember back as recent as two years ago, we always had water issues on that street. And this, this went on for what, maybe three or four years, Bob? Would you say? The water and the ice and the, we spent a lot of money in salt. It was, it was an issue that seeming, seemed to be that we couldn't get corrected. And lo and behold, the DPW has corrected it. And at one point in time, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a bid to, to do some extensive de-watering work there. And that, that bill, that invoice for that bid was well over $200,000?
That, what they were gonna build, they were gonna go up in the hills at some point, probably not right on the side hill, but up into the cedars and dig down, dig up a real deep trench and fill that trench with compacted clay to stop the water from coming to the north because it comes out of there. There's a tremendous amount of water that comes out there. You guys know that, it's a huge, huge amount of water. That's what they wanted to, and then, and there was no guarantee that that was gonna work, but they've done it other places and thought that that would be a likely spot to do that. But it was a really involved, high-impact kind of job. And they, you know...
So we really didn't have the money, number one. And number two, even that amount of expenditures didn't guarantee a solution.
Right.
So at that point in time, as I recall, the idea was to have the sock put over the drain that would be flushed in reverse. So when that sock, like a strainer in your laundry tub would, would fill with material, that it would eventually clog, but then you'd have to backflush it. And now, are we doing that on a regular basis?
Yes, we are.
And it's working?
It's working. It works. It's amazing to see the before and after of the water flow out of the pipe. It'll be just kind of coming out of the pipe and after we jet it out again, now it like bangs off the other side of the, of the catch basin. I mean, it's, it's incredible what it does.
How often do you have to flush it?
We make sure we do it once a year, but if, say if the, if the jet guy comes out and it's been a few months, we're having to run it up, you know, because usually he likes to get a half a day's work when they, when they come. So we try and, you know, I don't mind being ahead on that, you know? For the forty minutes it takes to do both sides of the road, it seems worth it.
So what's, what's happened, and Bob and I talked last week, because the flow has been so improved that there's been issues farther downstream. So he and Mike and some of the other DPW gentlemen have been cleaning out the ditching all the way down along Mill Street underground and then above ground, going behind. And they're stopping right now, they've only gone as far as Betty Owens' house, right?
From Mill Street.
And the, the plan is to eventually go all the way down to the end of Church Street where Church Street dead ends at the curve. And so they're, they're in the process of cleaning that all out over time. And then, once that, once that happens, you know, we should see even a better improved flow and less water retention. And then the other thing that Bob was, had brought to my attention was the area behind East Ridge and to the south of East Ridge and to the east of Church Street. And so Bob had some thoughts there that he wanted to talk about and how we could do that in a, a way that wasn't gonna be cost prohibitive. So what, what are your thoughts there?
Well, in the past, it's been, you can still see the spoils piles back in there along where it's been cleaned out, you thought maybe thirty years ago.
I'd say about thirty years ago.
And it's just, instead of it being a nice four-foot wide flowing little river, now it's trying to all sneak down through a foot wide, if that, with weeds and roots and cattail roots. And all that slows the flow down and it, you know, like the water coming up in Tanya's backyard, it has nowhere to go. It's just slow, it's just, it's just the evolution of a swamp is what it is. I mean, it just, it's building up and coming in and coming in a lot. Well, where we, this summer where we cleaned out, in the backyards on the Mill Street houses on the other side of Church Street, they, the thing, same thing was happening there. The swamp was creeping right up into their yard where they used to be able to mow. Now it's like ankle-deep of moosh. Well, what we've accomplished this summer was we cleaned that out. Now it's nice and wide, it flows, looks good. And the backyards are, within three or four days, you could walk through there dry after that. And it, and it also, the creek didn't really turn and stay formal and formalized inside its banks as it would turn and come where it was heading west again. It was actually, a couple of fingers were turning and going straight south again and getting into that swamp. And that, that water level was coming up and it was just, it just couldn't go anywhere. So we got the worst of that stretch done to, and behind Ms. Owens' house, like Wayne mentioned. But it's, the restriction, all we did was just move the restriction downstream. So we would like to poke on through from there to the big curve on South Church. And actually, we should probably think about opening it up some from there to the Big Creek, you know, and behind the funeral home. It's, because as you dig it out, then you have more water, so that makes those downstream areas have problems. You know, it just moves the problem around. So if we're ever going to head on that little creek that goes behind Wayne's and starts kind of behind your neighborhood, we, we should do those things first and then go to the north to let the water have someplace to go.
So you'd work your way, you'd work your way from downstream upstream, from basically south to north?
When you're digging too, you do that, but when you're digging, you don't have all that, you're not digging, constantly digging in the deep water. If you go upstream, you kind of, you know, the breeze is holding the water back for our, for our work, you know?
So what kind of problems with vegetation are we seeing? Are, is it, are they cattails? Are they fragmites or what, what's the, what's the issue?
There's, there's really not fragmites too much here. There's cattails everywhere here and there. The fragmites are not. In what we've worked in so far down there, we have another whole different problem on the end of Darren Street. That's a big fragmite problem. That's an incredible plant. I mean, it does, it works all the time. It works, it plugs it up fast. It's really, it's a tough...
And it retains soil, right?
Yeah. It just weaves a basket, weaves a basket and soil gets in there and it just stops the water. Over here, we don't really have that problem. And I, in behind you, your place and on up to Tanya's neighborhood, I really haven't paid that much attention. If there's a lot of frag, I know there's cattails, but I'm not sure if there's a gob of fragmites in there or not.
They were talking about, that was one of the areas they would treat, was specifically behind my area.
Because if you don't treat it, the area we did over here at the end of Darren Street, we dug that down because there was a house flooding their whole backyard. The water was almost coming in their garage. And we, right by the sign shop. And we dug that down and it was like there was no roots left. And we piled them all up so they could compost down and it kills the ones except for the ones that come out the top. And over the course of summer, they're back like we never did anything. But they were never treated. It was never treated there. So they're ruthless.
You said, once you dug that out though, that water in that gentleman's yard was gone within one hour?
Yeah, oh, yeah. It, it just flies out there immediately.
There's immediate results when you get the water flowing.
You can see the results day by day as you work, you know, as you work, work downstream. You can see the, you can see the results.
How will that affect the protected areas? I mean, it's, obviously it's great, very beneficial to all of us. How, as you're working your way, what is that doing to those areas?
Well, I'm not a, I can't tell you for sure what it's doing. It seems like it doesn't do anything. It greens up, you can't tell we are there in two months' time. It's greens up, it's, it's, and you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but that, that is, that shouldn't be a protected area. That's, that's a part of the, that's part of the drainage system. That's part of the storm sewer system for the city. I mean, it's, it's, by design, it's a, it's a ditch. And you should be, you know, that should be able to keep, you know, should be able to keep, but if, if, if it is affecting, I mean, people are just gonna have to deal with wet yards, you know? I mean, if you can't, if you can't clean it out.
Well, the one at the end of East Ridge, when that was put in, I have lost half my yard in the past five years. It's, it is completely gone. It's underwater all the time. So if we're moving that around and shifting, what will that do? That's what I'm thinking, you know?
What, a protected area was put in?
No, the protected area is behind me. The drain is at the end of the road. When the drain put in and all the Sherman Court water comes down now, my, half my backyard is flooded. It's gone. Because of moving their water to us has now given it to us. And it goes all the way down the street to the, to the ditch.
I mean, you'll have to get somebody's opinion with more credentials than I have, but I don't think that's where the water's coming from. It's coming out of the ground down there and just coming, it's coming this way more than down the hill. And that's a, that's a, I mean, when it, when you get a heavy rain, a couple, two, three-inch rain, then sure, there's extra water coming down there. But it, but by design, if everything's opened up and flowing, that water should just get on out of there. Within a few hours of the rain being done, the water should be gone. It can't be gone, it's just, it's making itself, you know, a swampy lake back there.
So, that being said, we're, the strategy is to, now we set up a file and it's, it's your intention to finish the little drain behind Ms. Owens' house down to the main creek and then start working your way backwards up Church Street, behind, the east of Church Street. And now, what's gonna stop you or what's gonna hinder you, your progress from day to day? I mean, how are you gonna try and bite off a little bit each day on this?
Well, the most expensive piece of equipment to rent is a little mini excavator. So we, we'd like to prep ahead of ourselves, get a couple of days. It's $225 a day for the machine. It gets a little less if you can get it three days in a row or something, then the daily rate goes down a little bit. But we'd like to get, prep an area ahead, get in and get the logs and flush the stumps off. We talked with David, I talked about broken concrete and crushed concrete to make a makeshift, although kind of permanent road. So in the future, the next time that has to be done, you just throw the pads in there and go on across it. Because you get these big grass heads in that swamp and even with the flotation pad, you start getting on there and, you know, the water starts coming up on your pads and then it freezes, this time of year it freezes. And then all of a sudden, you're on ice skates up with your little machine up on those pads. So we want to make it as stable as possible. We have saved up concrete from projects and stuff. We have quite a lot and we can, we can do a lot with that. And we're gonna have to buy some broken, some big crushed concrete pieces to, to shore up the, the ground that we have to... It's not really ground, it's kind of marshy that we have to get onto to clean the, the actual little ditch bottoms out.
So you're gonna make more progress in the wintertime or more in the summertime?
Well, I would think in the winter, because the frost is gonna help us. I mean, it gets our pads wet and slippery, but it also makes the ground more firm. We've had years in the past, since we've been poking around on this, that we, we could walk through there pretty good in the winter. Last winter wasn't one of those winters, it was wet all year, all winter. It should be, you know, as the day goes on, I mean, we, sometimes you will work away and buy, will quit at lunchtime and come back and the, the ground around us is drier already. It's not dry, but the water level's gone down in that sort of time. So it does, it works. But it's, some days you kick, you know, you, you do a lot of work and then it seems like maybe a day or two, you kind of slow down and you're just kind of fighting it all the time. But it's, we're pretty confident we can make, you know, for part of the reason, the little creek that comes behind you and crosses and goes next to Ms. Owens' house in the vacant lot, that is, we have to cross that at some point. That's why we gotta come in from Mill Street and go that way. We can't, we can't cross that. We gotta come to it from both sides. And once we do that, then we'll go on, we'll head north there and get across Mill Street. That's what our, you know, that's what our plan is.
So to have a contractor do this in one fell swoop, what kind of, you know, you told me you did go out and you tried to, tried to get some contractors to respond and what was their take on it?
Well, I talked to two different contractors. Well, I talked to two different contractors and they're like, oh, yeah, we can do that. Well, I'm like, well, okay, well, how much, how much is that gonna cost? And both of them are like, I don't know. I don't know how much that's gonna cost. It's, it, there's a lot involved. There's a lot involved in getting out in the middle of that, you know, getting out halfway through there from Mill Street to East Ridge. You get halfway out in the middle of that, there's a lot of stuff can happen in there, you know? You don't know what you're really, what you're really up against. Other than when, right where that little creek is, it is kind of a sandy bottom. And the, in the part you can get to and pull the weeds back and see, there is a sandy bottom out there. But where you gotta have the machine sitting, it's not a sandy bottom. It's, it's muck, you know, you're in muck. Thick, black muck.
Have you calculated the number of days to rent versus purchasing the mini excavator? If we're going to be utilizing it?
From Mill Street north, no, I haven't. But from here, I think if we got going with, I think we could do it in a week from-
Oh, really?
You know, from, from Church Street, behind the Red Barn, and get on over, you know, beyond Ms. Owens' house and stuff. I think we could get, I think we could do that in a week if we do some prep ahead of time. So, we're, you know, so we can keep on, we don't want to do 100 feet and then have to start building a road again. We do as much of that with our own equipment as we can before we started digging. And if we don't have to haul the spoils away, that saves, that's one of the biggest things, is having to get rid of the spoil piles, you know? So, what you can do, you know, once you get in there and get going, it goes faster than even I thought it'd go. You know, there was a couple of days that we did really, really good out there, fast. Then, you know, we did, the first probably 300 feet, we did by hand and that takes a while, you know?
What are we gonna do with the spoil pods?
Well-
Just let them compost?
Like back on the, on the, north of Mill Street, there, they didn't do anything with it in the past. You can still see the spoil piles are still there. They're all covered with weeds and trees growing out of them, but the piles are still there. I don't see why we couldn't, I mean, a lot of times if you dig it and throw it up on the bank and then just kind of knock it around a little bit so it's not a mole mound looking thing and just flatten it out. It grows back green fast, really fast. I, you could never try to get the spoils out of back to the north of Mill Street. There's no way.
And you'd probably, it would probably be best to do this, this time of the year before a thaw, before the, the general thaw in the spring?
Yeah.
Because you'll be dealing with even more water.
Right. Then, then you even have more water flowing, you know? You'd almost have to, at that, in the spring, you'd almost have to wait again till like August when things, it starts drying up and, so. I mean, one of the main things I worry about is getting halfway through between somewhere and I, I wouldn't ever want to leave a machine out there. So, you gotta swing the pads out so you can get out of there. And that takes time and it, just doing, just getting out of there takes time. Digging it is incidental. I mean, that, that doesn't take, that's-
It's the prep work that makes-
The prep work and getting in a house where the time spent digging's easy. You know, you, you can shoot one end of it and shoot one, you know, just every 40 feet, just shoot and make sure you're still kind of halfway on grade and you're, and you're, you're good. Because it, it levels itself out, you know, when you, as you, you know, if you got a little high spot in it, once it gets flowing, it takes that high spot right out of there if you got a couple inches high in a spot or something, so.
Sounds good.
Good. One other question for the respective drainage. Counsel had a question last month about what was the final result on the drain from Crosman Park down to Curzley Creek? Is that, as far as getting that thing cleaned out to the point where it was-
Well-
Pretty, you're pretty satisfied or not satisfied?
It doesn't hold water anymore. And it was holding, it was holding water for a month. And we had dye down in that, well, actually right here.
Yeah.
Down in that, it's 16 feet deep. There was dye in it for five weeks. And I pumped the crock out so we could get down in there and work and it was, all the dye came out, you know? So, it didn't, that's how slow, it would not, it wouldn't even take the dye out of the, it just sat there and sat there and sat there. Well, now, it's gushing right out of there. We don't know where it's going, but it's, it's not holding water anymore. We cannot find, we've, we've spent hours and days-
You don't know that it's making it into the creek?
We've never found it coming in the creek.
The dye disappeared?
It disappeared. So, it's, I've talked to-
I know, that's-
That's okay. That's fine.
We do not know. And we, we thought we knew. We thought we had it all figured out. But once, once you start putting the camera and the locator in there and the jet, it doesn't do at all what we, it goes through the fence here and you think it's heading right west and you can eyeball down to where you have a big pipe going in the creek way down below. It, it turns and goes under this fence and gets in that vacant lot there where the camera shop used to be and it, and it turns northwest and we have no idea where it goes from there. Because we can't get past there because of the way they, when they, when they added in this circuit of water drainage here, they tied a 12 inch into an eight inch. So, so now when the camera goes in, it's hitting that, it's hitting a dead wall. I can't get up over that hump and get on down the pipe so we can, we-
Well, that restriction would even reduce the flow rate if it was, if, if it's kind of restricted at some point. 12 inch to eight inch is gonna restrict something.
Oh, for sure. It's gonna, I mean, it's gonna, it's, it's, I mean, because technically, we really didn't do anything except we kept, we did make it through there one day before they jetted it out and then souped back the debris out of the hole. When the debris was in there, the camera could get through there. But he didn't want to send the camera first pass. He wanted to clean it out and then put the camera in there. Well, when he cleaned it out, then that's when that step occurred. And he couldn't, we can, we haven't been able to get past that point since then. And we had the big shots, the biggest companies in the state here working on it. Oh, they're, oh, we can get in there. Don't worry, we'll come and get through there. And they couldn't get through it. Three, three different companies. So, we made it like 200 feet past that blockage before cleaning all the crap out of the hole, so.
The good news is right now, it's flowing-
Flowing good.
Flowing good.
Since then, it has not backed up and-
Into the, into the park.
Into the park. And it was going into those, the Mill Street houses, backyards. It hasn't done that since, since then.
Good. Okay. Item B under the discussion, the 99 Dodge, what's, what's your thoughts there?
Well, Liz and I have been talking about putting it on at Mitten, was it Mitten?
Right.
And she asked me to put the things that, you know, make a list of the things that are good with the truck and not so good with the truck. And I'll do that, you know, this week and we can get it. We just kind of need a starting, you know, your, your input on what you want it to start.
Didn't we have it before when we got rid of, we did closed bid?
That's what John Lyons suggested, was closed bid. So, I'll have to look into-
Versus the closed bid process?
Yeah, I'll have to look into that process. And then I would imagine I would have to advertise it in the citizen. So, um-
I'm trying to think of when we got rid of it, because you could go through the old information. When was the last time we got rid of, I don't re, I don't know.
No vehicles?
Last time, yeah.
You have a handle?
If I might interject, when I was here for the first couple of years at the township, the old S10, which I didn't think you could even give away. They contracted a guy that has websites that turns over a lot of old vehicles. And he actually got 1,750 bucks out of the thing.
Yeah.
So, if you want to contact Kathy, she could probably get you that information other than how-
Yeah, other, you know, our, you could do that, but we've always done the open or the, the closed bid thing too. So, just keeping it like what we've always done.
Can we move forward then with that?
Sure.
Closed bid?
Okay.
I'll get you a list of that, or the goods and bads about the thing.
Hopefully, there's more goods.
Yeah, there's not many goods. There's not really goods on that list, so.
Bob, getting back to the, the drain, what would be, you're probably looking for us to really discuss this and maybe get you moving if we, after we discuss. What's your time?
The famous one.
Another month or so or, or sooner or?
Before we could get started?
Yeah.
Well-
What's a good time for you to do this?
I mean, we're, this time of year, it's nice to have some, I mean, it's, we've been busy with snow for a couple of days and it looks like we're gonna be busy the rest of the week with snow on and off a little bit. But after that, I mean, we're like chomping at the bit to get the blessing to go ahead and work on it and start working on it, you know? I got right away from the guy who owns the, the Red Barn, we can cut through his property as long as we fix everything back nice. We, we won't do hardly any damage in there, but we'll fix that back. He's good with it. But yeah, we're just, I mean, we'll work on it as we can all winter, you know?
And we, we've also had, to that point, we've also had some feedback from the residents further up Mill Hill. And they've been very, very pleased with the way that our DPW crew has entered and worked and then left the property. So, we'll, we'll use those people as references for any other residents who have any questions or comments as to how the DPW might affect their particular property as they move up Church Street to the north. So, okay?
Great.
The CIP plan, is that, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
What did you have on that list for us, if anything?
I don't know if we have anything. I don't, I haven't seen anything.
And that might be my fault.
Other than we don't need the CIP for the DNR grant, or for that grant though, right?
Right. And that John signed the engagement letter.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Okay.
Maybe you just might want to put in the, you know, for the record that the CIP is not required, is not a required item for that grant.
Because we, we thought it was at one point in time and was gonna throw a monkey wrench into it.
So, I think we need to put on the record that it's not required.
It's not required? I was gonna say, who said that? I did, because the Mary told me we had to have an adopted CIP.
Mary?
Mary from the DNR. Who said it was not required? That's what I'm wondering.
Uh, where did I see that?
Was it, was it because we're, we're gonna be perhaps able to ride the townships, piggy, piggyback on the townships?
That we received clarification this, I don't know if it was when I was talking to John or if it was you. Somebody, it was, somebody said, no, a CIP, I think it was John, that a CIP is not required for that. I think we need to verify that then, but that's what I, that was my understanding that that was last month told that we need it when in fact we don't. We'll, we'll confirm.
Okay, moving on to new business, item 12A, storage of RV, campers, boats, et cetera. We have with us our building official. Bill, would you step up the podium and, and talk about this briefly? If you would, please. Apparently, we've had one of our residents, and I don't know the street. What was the street was this?
Arbor Pine Drive.
Timber Pine Street.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we have this, but anyway.
Well, we had a complaint. That's why.
Well, I know, but we don't normally get complaints and discuss them in the meeting, especially when there's no violation, but-
Well, we're gonna verify if in fact there is a violation. So, is there a violation or isn't there one?
Not for the complaint that came in.
So, people can park any vehicle they want along the street?
It's not on the street.
Whether it's licensed, in their yard?
If it's licensed and it's operable. In other words, the tires are all pumped up and it has a current plate and it's operable, then it's not a violation.
Right. So, I mean, based on when I was reading this, it was like, you know, the resident called in, wondered if there was an ordinance to prohibit storage of the recreation. And your response was, you know, no, it's, you know, platable, which is true. There's no indication of any blight. So, again, I'm not sure why we have this on the agenda, which is why I suggested we strike it. But I did drive by the residence and the subdivision and there are several boats. There's a car trailer with a car, there's a camper, but all the boats are covered. All the, the, one RV is covered. It appears that there's nothing there that's inoperable. So, it, from my opinion, there was nothing there from any blight issues, just basically winter storage of their boats that are being covered.
In the driveways or adjacent?
In the driveways. Now-
Or the side yard.
Or the side yard. If maybe, it's looking shabby as, you know, according to her words, then that's something that may be their HOH, if they HOA, if they have one, would need to address, not the village.
I know the only concern that had been brought up before was parking it close to the road. So, when you're trying to pull out of your driveway or, or a road that you can see.
Oh, I don't see any of that information.
A couple of them have, from Mike, a couple of them had to be moved and, because when they're in your front yard on the corner, you can't see come, you know, turning from roads and things like that. That's the only concern is where it is.
There's typically-
Well, based on this, it didn't say any of that. So, I'm just going by this complaint.
But I'm just saying, that's the only thing that's, that's been addressed is where things are stored. It could be a concern if, if it's a safety issue.
If it's a visual-
If it's a visual impairment and obstruction, that would be, yeah.
Okay.
Typically, there's a sight distance issue when you have obstructions too close to the right of way. However, the right of way is typically quite a ways back off the street. And in most cases, it's on the backside of the sidewalks. So, you would actually be parking in the road, which is also permissible unless it's a no parking zone that has to be indicated as such. But it, it just depends on what the village wants to do about it, if anything. As I mentioned before, I worked for other villages where they do have restrictions on RVs, watercraft, those types of things. But your current ordinance just deals with the fact that if they're operable plated, they're permitted. The township's ordinance, however, does not allow you to park in a front yard on the lawn. It would have to be in a driveway or an area dedicated to parking.
Well, speaking of that, since you brought it up, so people in the village can park in their front lawn?
No, I said the township.
I know, but in the village, what is the village?
The village just doesn't address that. Yeah, part of the village's issue is that they have multiple regulations in different ordinances. Some fall under the zoning ordinance and some are in the regulatory ordinance. So, you actually have to look at both of them to see what actually fits for a given circumstance. And, and when Liz brought this to my attention, I did go to both and, and read both. And the only one that really could have applied but didn't apply was the license and the operability issue. So, it's whatever you wish to do.
What is the normal distance from a sidewalk that you can park alongside the road? I mean, you go down Mill Street and I see cars parked adjacent to the road and the sidewalk and there's no room in between and sometimes it's right on the edge of the sidewalk.
Actually, that is in the village's area of the roadway. It's not on a property. It's, it's in the village area. As long as you're off the traveled portion of the road and, and not an obstruction to the traveled area, it's permitted. There is no distance. Yeah, there's a number of them down because I come in and go out Mill Street. There's a number of vehicles that are parked there on a regular basis, especially on the south side of Mill Street. Or they just get off the road and there it stops. So, but that is actually in the road right of way. So.
I just find that, that the village permits that. I find that incredible. That you can pretty much park on your front lawn, what you would consider your front lawn or like that, and you're good to go, I guess.
Yeah, I was only asked to address this particular issue.
I was just asking.
Do I, do I have recommendations on, I have recommendations on a number of issues that I think are appropriate to maintain the streetscape within the village. That would be one of them where, you know, if you park where you have a driveway or create a spot that is a driveway, fine. But I think it, I personally think you lose the streetscape of a nice looking village when people park all over the grass.
I, I agree with that.
I, but I, I wasn't asked that question, but I am responding since you brought it up.
I, I have a question also. It's kind of directed toward Bob. I mean, with snow removal, how does that affect you when some of these cars are parked along the south side of Mill Street?
It makes it tough sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, because you gotta, you gotta slow down so you don't wake them in, you know? Because when you get a decent amount of snow, the snow's curling up pretty good, you know?
We don't ever say a snow emergency where all the cars have to be off the street either, do we?
At a certain time.
I, I think we do.
There's signs coming from the village, all, all entranceways saying, we're parking between two and six or something.
Right, but for snow. I mean, it's like- For snow, I mean, it's like, yeah, so, you know, like a lot of towns, where we have, you know, you have to have your cars off for snow plowing. That's something, I guess, we might want to consider, to make it easier to be able to get the snow, you know, snow plowing done, but, yeah.
Village of Southern Lake has that, I know, because I got a ticket for that once. So, I'm well aware that they have no parking off the road, or even in the road right-of-way from two to six AM.
Yeah, especially during snow season, obviously.
I would think if you're choosing to park there, you're going to get locked in. It's no different than the mound on the end of everybody's driveway when you plow down. I mean, if you park it up against the side of my car, or then my, it's my problem to do that.
You gotta shovel them out past that.
It's my problem.
Right. I don't see an issue with you just doing your job, and they'll have to deal with it.
Really boxing them in, you know?
Right. Go all the way around.
I'm just saying, it's like if there's snow, you know, you post it, we can post it on our website, post it, and just say, you know, the vehicles have to be moved for snow, but...
Well, the sad part is, as he's moving the snow, there's probably rock and everything else up with it.
Oh, yeah.
And he takes a risk of damaging somebody's vehicle that shouldn't really be there to begin with.
Right. I guess I like the idea of just making them, they have to be off the street, so that snow plowing can occur.
But they're not on the street. They're off, they're off the side, they're not on the street, so...
Technically, they're in the right-of-way.
Yeah, they're in the right-of-way. The street being defined is in the right-of-way. Liz, make a note on that, and we'll discuss that further, especially with the upcoming snow season.
And then, Liz, with this one, when the resident called in, did you direct her to, once you, once you helped her identify the, or referred her to the website where she could look at the ordinance?
Well, she was on the website and couldn't find anything.
Oh.
So, I looked, and I got Phil involved, and then...
Just so she would know in the future, like, she could look it up, she could self-help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
All business, we have a confirmation of a quote from Brandon Township Supervisor, Kathy Thurman. She provided the quote letter from A&amp;N Asphalt, requesting the acceptance of the village's portion, to hold the price quoted until spring of 2018, which they are willing to do, based upon our, and she also wanted a confirmation as to council's desire to assist to the extent that she has asked us to do so.
Do our portion.
Yeah. Any questions, comments?
Yes, what happens when they move and sell the building? And this becomes some private business, and we have a portion of the street, or the driveway, the parking lot, and yes, then what?
Well, our, our property line, according to, Bob and I looked at that, and the property line actually does include that portion. So, if it's sold to a private enterprise sometime, someplace down the road, we're still going to have that portion of that parking lot.
So, we would have to do signs or something saying, parking? I mean, what would you do? That it's park parking only, not for private, you know, that's what I'm saying. So, as we're doing this, just to, what will our investment look like, what will, you know, and that was just my question.
Actually, it kind of is unaskew. It starts at the south corner, within maybe two or three feet of the actual starting of the asphalt, and then it works its way, kind of kiddy-wap us, to the north, to a point where it's approximately, what, 15, 20 feet wide? Bob, is that...
Yeah.
So, it starts out down the south end, down by the backside of Papabello's, works its way up to the north, along the edge of this building, the east side of this building, and it, it ends right about by the service door of the, of the garage that's, anyway, there is a, there is a, it's not really quite a rectangle. It's kind of like a trapezoid type.
That's what the drive, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're only, would be replacing the bumpers that are in repair, or we're going to replace all of them?
I believe that's all of them, isn't it, Bob? All those bumpers?
That would be changing them all from, I think, plastic.
From concrete to plastic?
From plastic to concrete.
I thought that was an option.
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, okay. I thought that, okay. Are there any that are broken? They're looking good shape.
Kathy mentioned, if I recall correctly, that she said there were some that needed to be repaired, but...
Theirs did, because theirs are cement, but ours are plastic, and they're pretty new.
Yeah, some of them are warped and...
Are they?
And so on.
Because she said they can get moved and stuff.
Yeah, a couple of them, the ends broke off, a couple of them. They're not horrible, but I prefer the kind of being used to the plastic.
And it's only costing $648.
Especially with the park being right there, so that nobody, you can't move them to get across to the park.
They're more stable, and they're more difficult to move.
Either that, or put a guard rail right there, then you're for sure, nobody can, you know, you're not moving it, and it's protecting the park there with any kids playing, but that's just my thought. I don't know how much a guard rail would be compared to putting bumpers up. Maybe that's something we could look into, just an idea.
So, this particular motion, or suggestive motion, includes the cost of the pavement plus replacing 12 eight-foot concrete bumper blocks. That's all of them, correct?
Yes. And it's $648 to replace those 12 bumper blocks.
Correct.
So...
Bob, do you know, just by chance, how much a guard rail would be?
My only thought is, families coming in with their kid, you'd have to go all the way around the guard rail through a parking lot with your children.
Well, yeah.
I think it would be safer to go from your car directly to the park with children.
And I think we should just stick with...
Just looking for my car to block over.
Yeah, I think we should just stick with what's suggested, which is the 12, the 12 concrete bumper blocks. So, I think we should just stick with that.
Replace our cement.
Okay. Then, let's, we'll entertain a motion here.
Okay, let me read it.
Go ahead.
Approved the village's portion of the A&amp;N Asphalt Incorporated quote, "To remove and replace 2,400 square feet of parking lot surface used for Crossman Park parking and connected to the Brandon Township parking lot in the amount of $6,330, plus the additional amount of $648, to place and pin 12 new eight-foot concrete bumper blocks from new line item to be created in Fund 101, which is General Fund, Department 751, Parks and Beautification."
Is that handicap sign for us or for them? Because it's under our part, do we have a handicap sign that we need to approve, too?
No, it would, the handicap sign would be for us, but after speaking to Bob, it would actually cost less for us to do that.
Just do it ourselves, okay.
We already have our, a spare sign we could use, is that, yeah?
And posts.
And posts, okay.
There is no post there right now.
Perfect. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Sliva, and supported by Councilman Bryce. The motion is read. Any further questions or discussion?
What happens if they happen to sell before spring, when the work gets completed? Would that affect anything? Motion, you know, with us? We would still go ahead if we would just do our portion?
Well, I don't...
So, should the motion be hinging on the township doing their work?
It says "and connected to the Brandon Township parking lot." Well, number one, I don't know that the property's actively for sale.
No, I'm just, what if?
Number two, number two, in talking with a school board member today regarding Bel Ann, which was an alternate site for the township, it doesn't look like the township is going to proceed with that. Can that answer your question?
Yep, just covering our bases.
Good point, though. Good point, good question. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce? Yes. Batsu?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gordica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Motion is carried. So, I'll, I'll talk to Kathy Thurman tomorrow, and let her know about that. Item B, 13B, the trash receptacle screening discussion. Bill, once again, we defer to your wisdom.
I think I was asked to come to discuss the trash receptacle screening discussion. I thought, well, I didn't think, I guess what I would like to do is to draw your attention to the information that was brought to you in March of 2017 relative to this conversation, whereby I believe the previous manager, Trent, had started this operation to try to get screening around dumpsters for the commercial establishments within the village that didn't currently have screening. At this point in time, I have been able to get some screening put in around the permitted activity that has taken place within the village. In other words, the Dollar Tree, when they came in for a permit to redo that store, I refused to issue the permit until such time as they made provision to put in a dumpster and screening on their property. Actually, there was quite a discussion on that, because Dollar Tree wanted it at their back door, and I said, no, that's, that's not an appropriate place for it. Over by where the existing dumpster is, would be perfect. They were not real pleased with me, but they didn't get a certificate to occupy until they got their temporary dumpster out of there, and they started using the one that was behind the screening, that backs up to the four plexes behind it, or next to the bit-body works, or something, I don't know what it's called, something like that. As far as the remaining dumpsters, Mr. Trent had sent, I believe, letters out to numerous establishments, telling them they had to do that. However, that issue apparently left when Mr. Trent left. I, when I was asked to be the building official within the village, I agreed to do the building official stuff, but really didn't take on the ordinance enforcement type issues. I had a clear understanding with John when that happened, because at four hours a week, there just isn't enough really time to do the ordinance portions of it. Now, I've helped as much as I can, or as much as I'm available to, but this, this dumpster issue, if it needs to be continued further, needs to be taken up by somebody, and I'm presuming your new manager would be the one that would actually pick that up and move forward with it. The other thing that happened at that time in March was, the village found it necessary to adopt an addendum to the fee schedule. Under the current ordinance and under the current fee schedule at that time, for somebody to modify their site plan, was a $300 fee. And that seemed to be a bit exorbitant, just to put dumpster screening in. So, what has happened is, at that time, and that was part of your resolution on, I think it was 3/27, March 27th of 2017, to establish a $125 fee, which would cover my involvement in it, either from an administrative review process and/or inspections to make sure that it was put up according to the ordinance requirements, as well as cover the administrative cost. So, that $125 was to secure that. This is not uncommon, no matter where you go in any given governmental agency, that you charge fees appropriate for the work that's performed by that particular governing agency relative to individual sites. Not unlike, when you get a building permit, your building permit pays for the plan review inspections and that type of thing. If you don't charge those fees, what happens is, for an individual property to make an improvement, becomes the cost to everybody within the governing agency. So, every homeowner is going to pay something, maybe minimal at best, but they're going to pay something, because there's going to be fees attached to processing that paperwork and doing the inspections. So, that's why Mr. Trent, I'm sure, brought this to you back in March. So, to proceed with this, and it functions, I think probably the reason it's on hold, and I would suggest that I don't have sufficient time to actively pursue it, we'll probably wait until you have a new manager on board.
Well, and Lou, that, I'm not having a...
Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, you said thoughts, and I've already expressed my thoughts many times, so...
Well, since we don't have an active village manager at the moment, Wayne, could you maybe ask the, can the clerk, or yourself, as the next one down in line, kind of jump on board and maybe send another letter out, or find out why we can't have these people that are not in compliance comply?
Okay. Now, we, do we have a list of letters, or a list of individuals that are in violation right now, Liz?
We do not, I can compile one. I think Bill misspoke, I don't think we ever got to the point where the letters were actually sent, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought they were sent. I didn't do it, so I don't...
Everything was all set and ready to go, and then nothing ever happened with it.
So, we do have a list that was never followed through with?
I think, but we have, we have some known properties that do need attention. I mean, clearly, and it's on your agenda, so I guess I can call Jets out by name, but Jets and the ice cream store that's next to that, they clearly don't use their dumpster as it was intended to, and I kind of get it. It's like way over in the back 40, and...
The lids are always wide open, trash is blowing around, and I've witnessed people driving up, throwing their own trash inside of there during the middle of the day.
I get, I get that, but...
Not the business owner.
Right.
Just anybody's...
Just anybody, yeah. Because the lids are always wide open, it's accessible.
Very visible, and they're supposed to be screened, that's the whole idea, if you're coming into the town.
Right. But those properties also probably predated some of the ordinances, but...
I know it was addressed, when I was on the planning commission years ago.
Okay.
That was addressed.
Okay. Apparently not very well, because it still isn't taken care of, right?
Yeah, well, after, after a year of going on...
I'm sorry, if I may just call it like a steel, you know?
After a year of this going on, I can see maybe why, but I know that was addressed, and...
Because when you follow a letter, you've got to follow through on this...
I have looked around, it isn't like I drive through the village with my eyes closed. I don't have much of a, you know what, after 39 years of doing this job, my head does this driving, I don't care if it's on my own township, I find violations all over places, this is who I am, okay? I do know a number of properties where dumpsters do need screening, and they do need to be maintained. That just happens to be one of the more obvious ones around. But that one needs to be relocated to a point where it's actually accessible. I mean, it is bizarre to ask somebody, an employee, at the end of a shift, and I suspect they're open till 11 o'clock at night, take knee-deep snow and walk two parking lots away to go find a dumpster. This isn't going to happen. I, I get it, you know, it's just, that's who people are. So, we need to get it close to the building, we need to get it screened, and we also need to get it in a place where it just doesn't become everybody's dumpster.
Well, we have an intro manager, although, you know, he's remote, why can't he put this on his, you know, list to be following through on? I mean, he's on retainer, so to speak, I would think that this is just something that he should follow up on.
Somebody needs to go around and define them, though, find out which, and get the ones...
I will be more than happy to go and write down addresses.
At least get started on a few, I mean...
After, I almost know them by heart anyhow.
Okay.
So, I'll do that. So I'll do that for free.
I'd go for a ride. Thank you. It's a way to meet you.
Okay, I'm not suggesting you do anything about it other than just compile the list.
Exactly.
Let the administration handle the letters and the enforcement part of it.
Yeah, it is the administration's job to do that.
Right. I get that. But again, I only work for you four hours a week and that's, I can get some letters and listen, I can work on that end of it. I just don't have the time to drive all around town and get all this stuff.
And you're right, I don't think you were brought on to do code enforcement, so I'm not sure how that kind of got twisted a little bit, but I agree.
Well, there's a couple of things that happened.
To help out is one thing, but to take it on as a role is another.
Yeah. No, I don't intend on doing that. I do it for the township and I do it for another village and it's just, I know how much time it takes and there just isn't enough hours for me to do that and do it appropriately. Now, when this happens and you start doing this though, keep in mind that when you do ordinance enforcement, it should be on as much of an even basis as you possibly can. So we're not going to isolate individual businesses, but we're going to get all of them that don't comply is the intent.
And that's with anything, it's got to be across the board, right?
Pretty much.
So Bill, can I ask you a question just to verify? Nothing has changed with the ordinance when you were talking about in March? The only thing that changed in March was the fees.
For this particular issue, you as a board have agreed to modify the fee schedule only for this situation to be a hundred and twenty-five versus the three hundred. The point is, I still, if you read the ordinance and what is required to go to the planning commission, I can, as administrator, approve of where the dumpster location is and the screening, however, I still have to report to the planning commission what has been done. And in certain cases, Mr. Trent and I did that a couple of times, applied that part of the ordinance and Mr. Lyons and I had done that a couple of times. And he even agreed with the fact that in his interim position where he isn't necessarily available, he put his trust in me with my expertise and background to be able to work these situations out in this particular case. And I think I have the trust pretty much of the planning commission relative to making good decisions on these things, so... Yes, but nothing's changed since then.
So you're going to provide, I guess, to the whole action of us, you're going to provide a list, get it to Liz and Liz will forward it to John and John will pursue sending out?
Well, John and I work on it together.
And then, once we send one letter, we'll be in constant monitoring of the situation until resolution? Okay.
Send out a letter to all those and dislike the blight, it's the same thing.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
The process is the same.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
When do you think you're going to have it done?
By nine o'clock in the morning. I have a half a list going right now.
Okay, new item C then, the chicken ordinance update. We have a member of our planning commission with us tonight, Rick McAvinci. Do you have some feedback from planning commission for us?
Certainly.
Or some questions or both?
Or some questions. I think the first question is, you know, we worked on this earlier in the year and made some recommendations and then, as I understand it, as we understand it, we are asked by you folks to reinvestigate this, work on it some more and try to come to some proposed ordinance change, working with the village council and with other people involved who are interested. So before we do anything further with it, we want to know if that's true, that that's what you want us to be doing on this issue, chicken ordinance.
Well, we don't write the ordinance, right? Planning commission does. We actually adopted and approved it, but you, but I guess what was suggested last meeting was because, so that we're not going back and forth and it's delayed any longer than what it has taken so far, is that we can maybe work collaboratively and maybe have a workshop, and I don't know what the decision on with that, so we can work together on it so that we're not playing table tennis back and forth. So you kind of know our ideas and then you guys take it, write it, then we can get the attorney to review that and then it would come to council ultimately for the final approval.
All right. So that's what we want to know for sure before we spend a lot of time on it and weren't going to get anywhere with it, so...
Well, planning commission, as I understand it, planning commission just wants to know that we're working in the same general direction.
Right.
And then they will fine tune it and pick and choose from various other venues, other communities as to how it might be further fine tuned.
Collaboratively, you know, brainstorm so that you don't have a number, a process in place and we have a number, a process in place that's different and now all we're doing is back and forth, back and forth, and it's just going every other, you know, month and we're just not getting anything accomplished in a timely manner.
Right. So that's what, so in our last meeting last week, we decided to make a subcommittee to work on this ordinance with, that'd be Larry Hayden and I and Melanie Nyville. So that's what we're going to do. So I'll tell you so far what approach we want to take and see if you agree. Let's see. So we'll start with the draft of the Village of Ortonville ordinance that the attorney came up with, a two-page draft, and then analyze the requirements for the ordinance. Create a list of your concerns that you'd like taken care of putting in this ordinance. Create a list of concerns from current or chicken owners and anyone else that's interested in this issue, citizens that are interested in this issue. And then compare the lists, see if there's any conflicts there, try to come up with ways to address those conflicts or resolve those conflicts. And then, and then see how we can compromise so that we come up with an ordinance that satisfies almost everybody involved or interested. And then, and Larry's suggestion, and I agree with it, is that where there's no compromise possible, we would sort of tend toward following your recommendations or your ideas so that we can, this doesn't go on, you know, for the next year or so. So anyway, and then review reference documents like Fenton's ordinance is one example and several other communities we've looked at already, looking for how these elements might be formatted. And then generate an updated draft for the village to review. And we'll include supplemental information of how we came to the recommendation we came to, what our sources were and our thinking, comparing all of the information we gathered for this. That's about, that's our plan anyway.
So, in a perfect world, Rick, how many times would you like to see this in front of planning commission? Once, twice?
Oh, maybe twice.
Twice, okay.
At the most, three times. So that's why we're working on it as a subcommittee, so we plan to work on it, say, the week between Christmas and New Year's, get together and work on it then. Hopefully, we can have something ready either January or at the latest, February.
But what's your input? So you, the planning commission has come up with a subcommittee, so is that the route we want to take rather than the two councils joining and having a collaborative effort to do that? Or should the council also have a member or two or three to match the planning commission and have a subcommittee as well and the two subcommittees meet and collaborate?
Well, if we have, if we have an active liaison, perhaps a liaison should join the three members.
And that's, you know, that's, the thing is, that's one voice compared, and I'm just trying to be, that's one...
Traditionally, they get together, they present it, we give information, we give it back, it comes back to us. That's how an ordinance is formed.
Right.
So they get together, they decide, we mess with it, we give it back to them and it comes back to us. So we have a voice every single time.
But normally they don't have a subcommittee, so because if, right, you normally don't do that, it's usually the whole planning commission that does that. In this case, you're doing a subcommittee.
And the reason for that is it's an ongoing issue that we've already dealt with to some extent and we wanted to work as a subcommittee to, so that the entire planning commission doesn't have to discuss this every time we get together.
It saves time.
We're going to work on getting this information together and comparing it and whittling it down to some workable ordinance.
Well, if you've looked at the other, some of the other ordinances already, isn't that enough to make a decision for, I mean, how much more do you have to do? I'm just trying to get a feel for this. This has been going on for six months.
I don't think we have a lot more to do. We've got, gathered a lot of information already.
I know there's a process. I'm not getting against the process, but there are already communities that have this.
Well, there's a wide variety of chicken ordinances than what we've looked at and, you know, trying to find elements of those that fit this community is what we're working on or we will be working on.
Have you heard from each member of the board? You know, I'll say, you know, perhaps in writing and where they've, each member of this council has voiced what the criterion they would like to see established for a chicken ordinance? I know I sent something in...
I think we only have yours, actually.
Pardon me?
I believe we only have yours in writing.
Well, this is why I think we need to have some kind of a collaborative meeting if, between, you know, we'll say your subcommittee and the village council, because otherwise you're not, I mean, to kick this off, to start this out with, because otherwise you're not going to know exactly what it is we're looking for.
And so that's why the first thing I mentioned is we create a list of concerns with village council members on this subject, whichever way you want to come up with.
So Rick, if we all just gave your information, that's saving time and money on both sides. We are not going to get paid just to give you, this is what we'd like to see. We email it to you, you all have our information and you do your job.
That would be a good way to do it.
So we don't have to necessarily have a face-to-face, though?
No, no. I don't think so unless, and if you do have a liaison, if Mr. Robinson becomes, or whoever becomes...
Well, he already did. He said he would...
He's yours.
All right. Well, see, so you could give all the information to him or you could email it directly to me or Larry or Liz and we would receive it and have it and go over it.
Are you able to meet over Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's?
Yes.
Okay. So let's do this, in the interest of saving time tonight, those who have not supplied council with their written feelings, and let's make sure that Mr. Robinson gets that.
Yeah, I think he's, I think we should put our, I think our concerns should go funnel through our rep.
Yeah.
I think he should get all of them and then...
And then he'll meet with the subcommittee from the planning commission over the holiday.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think what we should call though is each council member should list in writing what their requirements are, what they would like to see in a, for a chicken ordinance, you know?
Fair enough.
Because, I don't know, I think I've listed, I probably listed eleven different requirements that I would like to see included in the, this ordinance allowing chickens. It's actually not a chicken ordinance.
One of the, one of the challenges that we face and the subcommittee and our liaison is going to need to address is the, if they're very detailed and there are eleven, like you say, eleven possible parameters as to how and who's going to enforce these. So my thinking is they need to be made relatively simple and not too in-depth so that they can be easily enforced. So, you know, that's just my general overview without getting into any detail myself, but just keep that in mind. If they're going to be difficult and, you know, when you start talking about getting a permit renewed every year, for example, then that's putting a burden on our clerk.
And I've heard people throw around, depending on your land size, how many you could have or something like that would be a time-consuming...
Yeah, and verifying and reverifying every year.
Was it reasonable to say every so many years, every second or third year or something like that or, you know, just, I mean, what are your thoughts so far with the planning commission?
The last we talked about last week was that if people sign up, go pay some kind of fee to initiate keeping chickens and they need to be checked to make sure they follow the parameters as far as size of chicken coop, size of pen, that kind of thing. And then that would be the only fee and application unless someone complains in the future sometime, rather than trying to make something, some annual fee and annual inspection and all that. That's where we're leaning at the moment.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last thing, if I can make a suggestion, NE correspondence you guys send my way, go ahead and copy him as well, Rick. All right?
Well, I don't have, I don't have, well, you got their emails?
Mm-hmm.
There's always those.
I guess...
Okay. Question?
Well, I just, you know, at the last meeting, there was some discussion or some mention that the City of Fenton, Fenton's ordinance, which allows chickens, that the City of Fenton was being sued with regard to their ordinance. And I know I have been in touch with a couple of City of Fenton officials as well as another council member and they tell us that they've never been challenged or sued. So I just wanted to kind of clear the air on that information which was presented at our last village council meeting.
I understand, Karen, not to interrupt you, but that was Fenton Township and not the City of Fenton.
Well, I...
The Village of Fenton went from three to six chickens. The township is the one that had a lawsuit that is partially resolved.
Yeah, well, I've got a copy of the tape and in there, twice, it is mentioned that this, it comes right out and says it, City of Fenton ordinance, they're being sued because they go against the right to farm because they only allow three chickens. And then again, in the DVD, it was suggested that the City of Fenton ordinance, it goes against state law regarding homeowners association restrictions on chickens and that is why they are being sued. So it was mentioned two times, it was the City of Fenton. Now, I do realize that there was a lawsuit in Fenton Township and I had wondered if there was some type of, I guess, mistake made or...
The Village of Fenton, yeah.
The Village is wrong.
He was wrong.
No.
So you misspoke yourself.
No, I said no City of Fenton, I said Fenton. There is no City of Fenton, it's the Village of Fenton. I never said the City of Fenton.
There is no Village of Fenton, there's City of Fenton. So I just wanted to say, you know, when you're looking at that ordinance as a template for the City of Fenton's ordinance, they are not being sued at all and they have never been sued or challenged. However, the township of Fenton, they were challenged with their ordinance. They did not allow chickens in residential areas and a resident did challenge their ordinance and it went to court and the court ruled in favor of the township. So it appears as though there will not be any chickens in residential areas of Fenton Township.
Okay, well, we'll let the subcommittee do that evaluation then.
Yeah.
Just one last question, since I'm being brought up to speed. Were you finished, Karen?
Yeah.
All right. On average, how many chickens do each residence have on average? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Are you meaning in Ortonville?
No, I'm asking a general question.
No, they all have different...
You mean in Ortonville?
Nobody knows.
There is no average.
Are you asking in Ortonville or not?
No, I'm talking about the village because that's the concern, right?
Yes, in Ortonville.
That I'm asking.
And we don't know.
I don't know.
Out of the seven people that were given a letter to meet the requirements, they all have different... all have different amounts.
Okay.
And I'm quite certain our building official is not going to find out.
You could get a list from Liz as to who was able to feel comfortable talking with you.
Exactly, exactly.
An annual inspection.
So we're going to, we're not going to have a subcommittee. We're going to have...
Yeah, we're going to have a subcommittee. We're going to have a representative from our planning commission or our liaison meet with our planning subcommittee.
Right, so, right, we are not having a subcommittee from the village council and have two subcommittees meet. It's all going to be through one council member with the planning commission.
Initially, yes. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, that's standard.
To start.
Okay, to start. Unless they, unless there's an impasse of some kind, okay.
Thank you, Mark. Let's get this wrapped up so we can take down the signs, all right?
Yes, the holidays, it's just kind of...
Is there a sign ordinance? Otherwise, we're going to have to put Christmas lights around the signs.
I think they have to come down in so many, right?
There is a sign ordinance, 30 days.
Let's take them down, I think, you know, it's over. We're talking.
Election signs have to be, I mean, I don't know, but...
Okay, last item on our agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Any questions, comments, non-agenda items that we're not on the agenda? There are none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support?
I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll make it and you support it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.